Called order our Alexander County Commissioner meeting for June the 18th. I will be doing the invocation and I recognize Commissioner Jeff Peel for the pledge of allegiance to stand.
Would please join me in the pledge attention. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll pray now. Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings of Alexander County. Praise you watch over our citizens and protect each one. Pray also especially for our EMS, emergency staff, and those as they sacrificed their time for the fire department, police department, sheriff's department, EMS, EMT, and for all the ones that put their life on the line for us each day to protect us. Be with us during this meeting. It would make wise decisions. It would move Alexander County forward. Ask all this in thy name and give us a safe trip back to our homes at the end of this meeting and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Chairman Reese, just if I could, there was a really bad wreck a little while ago on 64, a fatality and a 14-year-old who was just transported helicopter to CMS just about three minutes ago.
Okay.
Certainly, all the EMS personnel, the family, the one who's injured, we'd just remember those folks.
Yep. It's not a good thing anytime something like that happens. I thank for the ones we have who are there taking control, our sheriff's department and their EMTs, EMS, that can handle those situations. Thank you, Mr. Peel. Moving on to our next item, is there, as part of a report, any other commissioner have a report or an update on anything? Sure is hot, so I hope everybody stays cool and try not to overdo it. Moving on, we'll do the adoption of the agenda. I'm sure everyone's had ample time to take a look at it. I entertain the motion to adopt our agenda as stated.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
No, sure.
Okay. And being none, I entertain a vote of approval by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, I have something here to read, actually from Russell Green, which kind of goes along with our emergency things. Russell was not able to be here due to something arising in the family, but he asked for me to announce that there will be a statewide emergency exercise tomorrow. Citizens may see Department of Agriculture vehicles in the area and also, as we mentioned, the hot weather, EMS, emergency service departments, they're all taking precautions due to the heat and really being excessive, and they're keeping ice on ambulances and trucks to respond to heat-related calls as needed. Commissioner Lell mentions someone at the ballgame. And you know, if you're outside, it doesn't take too long to overheat if you're not being hydrated, so each one remember that and hopefully we'll have no need of that, but if you do, you know, make that call and also remember there might be some emergency things going on as a, as an exercise for tomorrow. And moving on to our meeting, item number one, memorandum of understanding between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Alexander County. I recognize our county manager, Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the memorandum of understanding between DHHS and Alexander County. This is a one-year agreement effective July 1st through June 30th of next year. This agreement contains certain performance requirements and administrative responsibilities related to social service programs. This is something that has really very, very big, have a lot of impact on counties across North Carolina and DHHS recognizes that these agreements and specifically these required performance measurements represent a sort of a new dynamic, as they call it, to the administration of social services in North Carolina. No, there'll be no performance improvement plans or corrective action plans related to the performance measurements will be initiated until after January 1, 2019. So during the first six months, six months, the HHS will be providing counties results of these different performance measurements in hopes that they can correct those things and do things in accordance with what the HHS hopes that they do. We have, staff has discussed this with other DSS directors. Our DSS director has talked to a number of other directors. I've talked to a number of county managers. We've had conference calls with the North Carolina County Commissioners, executive director and their attorney. We've talked with our attorney about it. This is not something we're real excited about because some of the measurements seem very unfair, but since the agreement has to be signed by June 30th, 2018, or we risk losing funding, a number of counties have developed what they call signing statements. And what a signing statement is, it comments on the written agreement and expresses serious concerns regarding the inevitable obstacles regarding compliance with the terms of the MOU as written. The MOU was not developed with mutual accord of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Alexander County DSS. This document is binding on our agency yet does not make meaningful allowances for performance standards based on the limitations that we have in our resources. One case can cause us not to meet or pass performance standards, but we have, really have no choice in approving this. So what I would recommend is that this be, you approve this if you would approve us. There's a signing statement that Trish has, that you have before you, and this is, I'll say recommended, a number of other counties are doing this, as I mentioned earlier, and if you would approve that, we'll send that with it. It has to be signed before June 30th, and if you would authorize DSS, our DSS director and myself to sign it, we'll also send copies to all of our representatives. This will be a new day in social services in North Carolina. Will have a tremendous impact on counties and I'm not sure we know exactly what's going to happen, but we will have to make, if we make mistakes, we'll have to pay the money back to the state. So, I don't know if I can answer your questions, but there's, there's been a lot of discussion with a number of counties, Burke County and Caldwell County, or we've talked with them numerous times, they're also very concerned about it.
Okay. I know we've talked several times about it and another one of the good old government things that, yeah.
It's a mandate.
And we have to follow by their processes, so even though, you know, a lot of times it's not very beneficial, but they've sent it out, so like I said, if we don't sign it, then we'll be penalized or lose money.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I agree that this is not, may not be handled in the best possible manner, but yeah, I did look through this and there are some things in this that I think are, that I think would be very beneficial to certain segments of our population, you know, and I'm just going, I'm not running for reelection, so I'm going to give you my true opinion. You know, as I looked through this, there's, their man, performance, you know, mandated performance requirements for child welfare foster care. With my wife and I being licensed foster parents, having adopted two of our five children through foster and adopt, foster to adopt, and actually, we have a new baby in our house as of today, which makes six, I know it sounds, I'm not saying we're, I'm not saying we're normal or not crazy because I think we are, but.
It's a good thing.
You know, my wife is very involved in foster care process. She's state certified to teach the licensure classes. She does not work for Alexander County or any other county, but you know, I read some of these things about permanent, you know, having a permanency plan for foster, you know, foster youth, children, whatever you want to call them, you know, they're saying have 95% of the foster children and or youth have a permanency plan for them within 60 days of the child entering custody. A permanency plan just means that they are trying, you know, that they do the investigation and they determine whether or not they're trying to reunite that child with its birth parents or a family member, or if that child does not have any of those options, would be, you know, would need, would be made adoptable. And, you know, then there's some other, some other things where, you know, 41% of children who enter foster care in a 12-month period be discharged to permanency within 12 months. That just means they're trying to limit the number of children who are in foster care for over a year. There are children in Alexander County that have been in foster care three years. That is not consistent with what the state of North Carolina or anybody else thinks is reasonable. And I know this to be true because friends of ours have that child. And so, there are aspects of this unilateral agreement that I feel would be beneficial because there needs to be, there needs to be some performance standard because it's really easy to get, it's really easy to say, oh, we're, we're doing, we're working hard and we're doing our best, but if there's no measure of are you doing your job or not, it's really easy to feel like you're doing a great job and everybody else has, everybody in the real world has somebody that, somebody to account, you know, somebody they're accountable to, whether it's a boss, hey, even children are accountable to their parents. So, I hope this, I hope this is, this is revised and done the correct way because I do think there are, you know, there are, there are things in there that are, that would be very beneficial.
Right.
Although, it's never good when, you know, the contract is not supposed to be unilateral because the contract is between two parties, not one. And in this kitchen, and in this situation, it seems to have been drawn up very unilaterally.
Knowing what little I do know, which I've known about this for a little while, would echo exactly what Commissioner Lell said, I believe in standards. I believe that there should be standards for foster care, there should be standards for, for everything. Don't get me wrong, I think the standards part of this whole process is fine. I think the accountability piece is fine, but I also feel very strongly that it's hard to hit a target that you don't know about. Not all the targets have been defined, so you have to blindly say, I agree, when you're not really sure about all that you're agreeing to and you're just having faith that it's going to be a good measure and a good target and a good process. I think that the desire and the vision is good. The process to get us there, I'm afraid is going to be a little murky and muddy and if that could be a little more clearly defined, I think there wouldn't be as much apprehension about buying into the process. So with great regard, I'm concerned about the process, not the desired outcome. The desired outcome is great.
And Mr. Chairman, one thing, let me, I'm good at saying something and realizing that I should have said it differently. My comments were not directed at Alexander County DSS as being uncapable or, you know, or the, or any part of Department of Social Services being inept at what they do. I know there are special circumstan, there are circumstances and, and I will largely, from my experience, Department of Social Services and the foster to adoption world play a very, very crucial role, but there are also, there are also attorneys and judges that play a very crucial role as well. And I have been in court and witnessed the way it is handled by attorneys and judges who were supposed to be professionals and they don't always, they definitely don't always make it easier or better for DSS or the child parents, foster parents, guardian at liadum, and all the other folks that are involved in that child's life. So, I just, like I say, wanted to say, I didn't, I don't want you, I didn't want to throw DSS, Alexander County DSS under the bus because that's not what I meant, that's not what I was doing, or meant to do by my statements.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think our social service department, I guess they, they're doing, you know, the best job that they can. And like I say, when things like this come out, you know, we always, all of us want to look for the best thing for children and for anyone who's using, you know, that facility, but I think sometimes it removes the, the touch kind of of the personal, you know, thing that you get sometimes when things are just kind of shoved down, but I think several other counties are also kind of resisting to, is that correct, Mr. French?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Chairman, I think the concern, you know, from a, I guess from a business perspective is for the financial impact it has, ends up having on the counties. You know, this is focusing on measurements which I think are good, but the, but the treatment of children and older adults, to me is more where the, you know, where the focus should be. I mean, it's not all about, and this is more about those standards, but from a business standpoint, you know, we could end up being penalized or having to add additional staff and it's not just us. We've heard the same kind of concerns from other counties, but it's a new day and so we'll do the very best we can.
And one other statement, regardless, you know, whether it's Child Protective Services or adult, you know, adult services, adult Medicaid, child Medicaid, I mean, there are a lot of moving parts in Department of Social Services. I served on that board for a short period of time. And we, you know, and we don't want performance standards to do what I feel like it's done to some degree in the school system in that they, those performance standards become the most important thing that there is and that calls, that calls the, the care of children, adults and senior adults, you know, for the, the level of care decrease because we've got to get it done by a certain date, you know, and that's finding that happy medium. I don't think finding that happy medium would be a simple feat and, but like, like Commissioner Peel said, I'm a firm believer in, you've got a, you have to have, you have to have some.
Way to track, so.
Some way to track and some way to, some way to keep up with what's going on and, you know, and often that's an outside source looking in, but maybe moving a little fast on this one.
Yeah. So we need to adopt this?
Yes, sir. Need a motion to approve.
I make a recommendation as a motion that we adopt the memorandum of understanding between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Alexander County along with the letters, signed statement.
Signed statement.
Letter. I'd entertain a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion or any other question?
Mr. Chairman, would that include us approving us to be able to sign by June 30th?
Yes, to sign by June 30th.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, one, just as a point of discussion, the, the letter that we will be sending in with the approved statement of understanding, basically, I mean, I know, Rick, what you had, what, what it says, um, is it crazy for us to, is it crazy, I mean, would it be crazy to, to put on that letter that we agree there should be some standards, but it needs to be something that, we feel like it needs to be something that both parties have input?
That's what it says. That's what it says.
Incorporated in.
Okay. Good deal.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lell? At this time, I entertain a vote to approve the memorandum. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the discussion. Moving on to item number two, it's also a good one. Alexander County Uniform Guidance Procurement Policy. A lot of stuff rolling out here. I recognize our county manager, Rick French, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number two is the Alexander County Uniform Guidance Procurement Policy for North Carolina Local Governments. And at the top of the page, it says, note, when spending federal grant and loan award funds, local governments are required to adopt written procurement policies that conform to applicable federal law and uniform guidance. That's something that we started talking about during the budget process and this policy needs to be adopted before July 1st, when this all goes into effect. This policy applies to contracts that fall under that category for purchases of services, construction, repair work funded. It goes on and on. Give you an example, the sewer line that will be installed to Stoney Point Elementary School, if we decide to run another sewer line and tap it onto that line and run it into other areas in Stoney Point, that line also will be subject to these same procedures and policies. And there's lots and lots of steps from, if you'll look, this nine-page agreement from the, it deals with anything that costs $3,500 and up, service contracts of different degrees. If you'll look on page three, it deals with procurements costing $150,000 or more. The county's grant administrator or requesting department shall develop an estimate of the cost of the procurement prior to soliciting bids. It has all these different provisions. If you'll go over to page four, it talks about contracts costing less than $3,500, service contracts that cost between $3,500 and up to $90,000. On page five, service contracts and purchase contracts costing $90,000 and above. It, I mean, it just, it goes on as our chairman sat through and endured one day of compliance training and then we went back another day.
Took it for the team, guys.
Yeah, he did take one for the team. On page six, it talks about construction and repair contracts that range with cost between $150,000 up to $500,000 and all the different steps that have to be done. Construction and repair contracts costing $500,000 and above. I mean, it's very detailed on how you do this and, and so, this is something that, again, this will be something that will be impacted, but again, it impacts with federal money. So anytime we spend federal grant or loan award funds, we are required to adopt this and go through these policies for procurement. So, we need to adopt that tonight.
Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Key words, just in the little bit that you elaborated on here.
Yes, sir.
If you look at the purpose, it says to establish guidelines that meet or exceed the procurement requirements.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, to me, that, that's an initial right off the get-go. That's a governmental overreach that's going to, you know, be excessive.
It is.
The next part, you talked several places maintained by the county's grant administrator. You know, we don't have a grant administrator, so another place telling us, okay, we're getting kicked in the head here too.
But we do, we do have a, the COG normally serves as our grant administrator and we approve the compliance person and the budget, so those two work hand in hand on these kind of things.
But just sounds, you know, like.
It is.
More of.
Additional money.
Additional money, additional red tape, additional bureaucracy to do something good, you have to go through some crazy steps in order to do it. And I apologize to you and Chairman Reese for having to sit through what you had to sit through, but unfortunately.
Don't. If we can get money, we'll sit through it.
Yeah, we'll sit through it.
It's a golden rule. He who has the gold makes the rule and they've made the rule and if we want the gold, we got to accept the rule.
But you know, the thing that's interesting about this is that it, you know, it's going to, it can impact the senior center, it can impact the DSS, it could impact the sheriff's department with grants and different things. It could, it'll certainly impact economic development, some of the funds that they receive or federal funds. The broadband study that we're going to do, we're going after ARC money, that's federal money. It's the same processes will have to be used and the list goes on and on. And if you remember the schedule, so to speak, for the sewer line for Stoney Point Elementary School, 2020, it wouldn't be bid until 2020. There's just, there's just a lot of steps you have to go through, so you're right, Commissioner Peel.
It's kind of like the DSS thing.
Right.
The intention here is good.
Right.
The intention is, okay, let's stop wasting government money and we're going to spend money for what we're supposed to be spending money for, but you know, we've gone way overboard on the common sense approach to let's tidy up and clean up the waste.
Some of these policies though are to stop some of the things where governments in the past have received, well, they might receive a CDBG grant for water lines, say for example, and in the past, what some cities and counties would do if they were in the water business, if they had additional funds and weren't going to spend them, they might decide to buy fire hydrants for upcoming projects. Well, this is going to stop that kind of stuff from, it's going to make you spend for the project that you intended it to be for, so it's just, it controls the spending quite a bit, so.
Good outcome.
Yeah, right.
Tough process.
Right, right.
Only thing I would ask is, well, wait, I'm not going to ask. Only statement I would make.
Okay.
Like they do this in Washington DC.
Mm-hmm. Well, one thing is.
Every dollar in, if every dollar the federal government spent had to go through what this is saying, we have to go through if and when we, you know, earn that federal money through the grant. we have to go through if and when we, you know, earn that federal money through the grant process.
Mm-hmm. But they have the horsepower.
I know, but I'm just, you know, but I just, it just, you know, it's, 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 it's that standard, it's that standard thing. Play by my rules, but I don't have to, if you ask me.
Yeah. Well, and for a small county like us, it just kinda adds a little burden to our, uh, budget with a person. And you're gonna make sure that you've got it, cause if you get it and you have to give it back, then that's a, a pretty tough thing, too, so. But the United States, as Mr. French mentioned, if you spend more than thirty-five hundred dollars, you gotta do this. There's not many things we do that falls under thirty-five hundred dollars. So, uh, it's another thing we just have to endure.
As much as you can, yeah.
Hmm. Okay, once again, uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve item number two. Alexander County Uniform Guidance Procurement Policy as stated and dissected a little bit.
Mr., now, did you make that as a motion?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Alexander County Uniform Guidance Procurement Policy provided to us by our federal government.
Mm-hmm. Have a motion, have a second?
Yes, second reluctantly.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any other, uh, discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor reluctantly, raise your right hand. Motion approves. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, our board appointments and reappointments for COG Region E Aging Advisory Committee and I Care Board. Recognize our county manager, Rick French, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the COG, uh, Region E Aging Advisory Committee, reappoint Shirley Mays for two years. The I Care Board, and the I Care Board is a nonprofit, um, that works to assist individuals and families with low incomes to attain skills to help them become more self-sufficient. And with that, appoint Brett Fensler for three years to the I Care Board.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve these appointments in a second.
Without reservation, I make a motion that we approve the appointments of Shirley Mays and Brett Fensler as assigned in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? Being none, I'd entertain a vote of approval by raising right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item number four, our, uh, Budget Ordinance Amendments Number sixty-one through sixty-six. Um, Mr. French, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Budget Amendment Number sixty-one is to increase the public buildings budget for additional costs to pay parking lots for various county buildings, increases due to additional work needed for some locations because of conditions discovered after the work began. Um, Budget Amendment Number sixty-two is to budget for additional revenues and expenses due to more garage work being done for the town than what was expected in the original budget for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. It also has a revenue that goes along with that. Uh, to increase the detention center budget for the cost of May and June inmate meals increases due to higher number of inmates from other counties than original, uh, budget estimates. Uh, Budget Amendment Number sixty-four is to budget for payouts of vacation, holiday, and comp time for employees leaving during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year. Budget Amendment Number sixty-five is to budget for payouts or vacation, holiday, comp time for employees leaving during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year to increase solid waste budget, uh, solid waste fund budget for expenses that are greater than original estimates, and to budget for general fund transfer to assist with the solid waste fund expense budget adjustments. And last but not least is Budget Amendment, Budget Amendment Number sixty-six, and is to, uh, to adjust the project budget of revised, uh, cost estimates, uh, for the Borealis Compounds, uh, bid opening, which David's gonna comment on, gonna give you the report here in just a minute.
Okay, uh, everyone's heard and seen those. Is there, I'd entertain a motion to approve in a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just a question on the, uh, one at the garage.
Number sixty-two.
Yes. Can you elaborate on that any further, Mr. French?
I, I mean, what did you?
Mr. French, if you don't mind, what, what is?
We do work.
Would you explain our, our relationship with the town?
We repair, if we can, automobiles, uh, trucks for the town, and in turn, they pay us for those services. And it just, it just turns out there's more repairs, so there's more revenue, so we have to adjust the budget.
That's what I'm saying. There, the, I just wanted to be clear that there's.
There's revenue.
More going in, but there's more coming back as well.
That's correct.
Yeah. I mean, I just wanted that to be clarified.
The only, and, Mr. Chairman, on number sixty-three, the increase on food and provisions for inmates. We, we don't mind for there to be inmates from other counties. That's, we want inmates from other counties because that's helping us pay, that's helping pay for that facility, and never wanna spend, you know, we never wanna spend more money than we planned. But if that expense is a result of increased revenue coming in from other counties.
It is.
Which, like I said, which it is, then, um, that's good, and I would, and, you know, would like to say to the sheriff, we appreciate, we appreciate his, you know, his help and cooperation and, you know, and, and trying to, trying to generate some revenue with some folks from out of, out of the county. And if you make sure he knows, we appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. Any other questions? Being none, I would entertain a motion in a second to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments Number sixty-one through sixty-six.
We did that.
Just needs to vote on it, right?
We did that.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, okay, I got, sorry about that.
We're talking way too much tonight.
Okay, we've already done that, so we're ready for a vote now. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, sorry about that. Uh, okay, moving on to item number five. Uh, recognize David Eisenhower for Borealis Compounds rail bids and award recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure to present additional information regarding the Borealis Railspur project. And just as a quick background for anybody who might be listening that doesn't know what Borealis Compounds means, that is our newest industrial employer in Alexander County, as you all know. They purchased the Alexander Railroad Shell Building last year, fifty thousand square foot shell building, which they are currently upgrading and anticipate spending between twelve and fifteen million dollars on the building, on, uh, equipment upgrades for that building, and they anticipate hiring at least thirty-seven new jobs in, in relation to the requirement that they have for fulfilling grants. Um, as part of the, uh, local and state incentive for this project, the county agreed to coordinate the rail spur construction, which is a critical element in their operation. They could not locate in Alexander County without the rail spur. So we have undertaken that project, and I am pleased to, to let you know that there is funding from a number of sources for this project. Being, North Carolina Railroad Company has pledged two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the project. North Carolina Department of Transportation has pledged up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the project. Alexander Railroad has pledged fifty thousand, and you commissioners have graciously pledged fifty thousand dollars as well. And the company has pledged the remaining amount, which turned out to be forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for the project. So, um, in order to proceed with this, we had a bid opening. This bid process was advertised beginning in, uh, late April, early May. We advertised it in local newspaper, on county and EDC websites, and on the state, uh, interactive purchasing system. We were very pleased that we received six bids for the project, three from companies within North Carolina and three outside of North Carolina. Those bids were, they were sealed bids, as is required in the formal bid opening. Those bids were opened on May twenty-first. We received bids from Burnett and Sons of Virginia in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Keith Benfield Contractors from North Carolina in the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Tarheel Railroad, obviously, North Carolina, seven hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. STX Railroad Construction from Georgia, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. SS Civil Constructors, one million, fifty-four thousand, and from Amrail Construction, seven hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. So upon bid opening, you determine who the apparent low bidder is, and obviously, the apparent low bidder was Keith Benfield Contractors at five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred. We take that bid and reviewed it. I reviewed it, railroad reviewed it. Uh, officials with, uh, Borealis and their engineering company reviewed the bid. Uh, State of North Carolina Department of Transportation Rail Division reviewed the low bid to make sure that the bid was responsive, which means that it met all the standards in the bid package and the scope of work. We also have to determine if the bidder is responsible, meaning that the bidder is qualified to actually do the work. Uh, the, uh, low bidder has more than thirty years of experience in railroad contracting and has, in fact, worked in Alexander County previously. So therefore, we have all, uh, determined that this is a responsive and responsible bid, and it would be my recommendation that the board award the construction contract to Keith Benfield Contractors in the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And I will be glad to answer any questions that the board may have.
Turns out pretty thorough process, very well vetted.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Done work here before. We've obviously have been pleased with our quality of work, um, so, good job.
David, one thing that amazes me, and I, I mean, and it's not, you know, with, with commercial construction, the bids tend to be pretty in line, you know, with standard commercial construction of a building.
Right.
Bids seem to be normally pretty darn close to each other, you know, within ten, fifteen percent. You know, and I, and I see these, and low bid was five hundred forty-one thousand, high bid was a one million, fifty-four thousand. SNS Civil Constructors was looking to make a dollar. Holy cow. You know, um, or either they have some crazy overhead, one of the two.
Right.
Cause that's, I mean, that's a, the range is, uh, the range is just, it's baffling.
I agree, yeah, it was a wide range, and I'm, I'm glad I did not open that bid first. I may have died of a heart attack right there.
Yeah.
Good, good work.
Yeah. Any other question? Sounds good, appreciate, you know, what you've done on that. So we need to approve this. Okay, I'd, uh, entertain a motion in a second to approve the Borealis Compounds rail bids, being the, the low bid, Keith Benfield Contractors, five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we accept the bid of five hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars from Keith Benfield Contractors for the Borealis Compounds rail project. The end.
All right. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any other discussion or question? Being none, I'd entertain a motion to approve, raise your right hand. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Prove, thank you, David, appreciate it.
I just can't get over how quiet Milton and Ryan are tonight.
They're really quiet tonight, yeah. Uh, moving on to, uh, item number six in our county manager's report, I recognize our county manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as we stated earlier, um, several of us, Chairman Reese, David Eisenhower, Gary Herman, and I all attended the mandatory training, uh, that was, uh, part of the Stoney Point Elementary School wastewater project on June sixth and Ju, and June seventh. Um, Mr. Eisenhower, Mr. Herman, and I also had to take a test on the, on the seventh, which we passed, and so just, um, that's part of that, this new compliance, is part of the CDBGI program, that's the infrastructure program. And then same type of training we had to take with emergency services, um, uh, on June fourteenth. Uh, also over the weekend, just wanna mention that, um, we had our fourth Vertical Mile Challenge Trail Race. We had almost eighty people finish the race, uh, winning time was two hours and forty-seven minutes. Um, and a vertical mile is fifty-two hundred and eighty feet of up and fifty-two hundred and eighty feet of down over the course, uh, at Rocky Face, which is a little over two miles, so they go about seventeen miles plus. And it was not a, a, a real cool day on, on Saturday, and, but we, everybody, uh, we had, uh, ten folks not finished, but, uh, eighty did finish out of about ninety starters, which is pretty good, and, um, I think people had a good time. We had people from four states here, all over North Carolina, so we had a good, uh, good showing then, and we're really pleased at turnout, so. Um, and, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things for closed session, but that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. French. Any questions, any commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one more thing I've missed, mentioned during commissioners' reports.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I forgot to mention during the commissioner's report, um, my son plays recreation baseball, and we've been playing a lot of baseball in the last couple of weeks, and we were at Dusty Ridge having practice, uh, one night last week, and, um, oh, my mind's going blank. Um, deputy from Sheriff's Department was, you know, patrolling, which, uh, you know, I know they do, and, um, this young man's the school resource officer at West Alexander Middle School.
Jake Limbly.
Officer Limbly, that's correct. Well, we're practicing, and I, and I saw him come in the parking lot. I don't know how familiar you are, but I know Rick, and, but saw him come in, and he kinda pulled down toward the dumpster that's down at the bottom of the parking lot, and then he rode up to where we were, and there was another team practicing on one of the other fields, and then he just came to tell us that, uh, he had just watched a baby black bear jump out of the dumpster. And wanted to let us know, because anytime there's a baby black bear, there's probably a mama black bear that's not far behind or far away. And at Dusty Ridge on the one field we were practicing on, if they, if a, a child fouls one off the first base line, it goes in the woods.
Mm-hmm.
And, well, those are the woods that the bear would potentially be in. So we did lose a few baseballs. We just sort of let them go. But I just wanted to, you know, wanted to say, you know, I'm trying to teach my children that the Sheriff's Department, you know, whether it's a, a deputy or the state trooper, whomever, you know, some of those kids, when, when a patrol car drove up, they thought, oh, gosh, somebody's in trouble, somebody's getting arrested, you know, cause it's a bunch of eight-year-old little boys. Um, but I just wanted to say, I do appreciate as a citizen and a, you know, a dad and a baseball coach and a whatever, well, assistant baseball coach, let me say that. Um, I appreciate the Sheriff's Department keeping an eye out for everybody and, you know, letting us know when they see a baby bear that's close to where we are, because, um, I was trying, I was looking around, trying to figure out who I thought I could outrun if I needed to, you know, cause they say you only have to be able to outrun one person.
That's right.
And, uh, but, but, yeah, I just wanna say, you know, publicly that I do, you know, we, I see, yeah, there's, I'm in Bethlehem, and there's, I see, I mean, I don't know how many times a day I pass, you know, a deputy on, on the road, cause I'm running back and forth here, and they're everywhere. And I mean, it's, I see, you know, patrol cars at least several times a day, and it's a, it's a good feeling to know that somebody's out there, somebody's out there watching for us.
For sure, that's a good thing.
Especially when they're bears.
Yeah.
In Reddenburg.
I heard we did have some, a couple of new residents in Alexander County, so everybody just be on the lookout for, you know, any black bear. Don't try to feed it. Don't try to feed it or anything like that, so make a call to our animal control or 911 if you see something, and, you know, take care of that, so, unless Mr. Lael wants to rope it the next time he sees it.
I'm good.
All right. Moving on, our next item is the adoption of the consent agenda. I'd entertain a, a motion in a second to approve our consent agenda as stated. Everyone's had time to look at it in their packets.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session, reference to NCGS 143 dot 318, 4, 5, and 6 for Economic Development, Contractual, and Personnel. We will also read adjourn only for the purpose of adjournment. I mean, a motion in a second.
Make a motion that we adjourn to closed, adjourn and recommend in closed session.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor, stand up. Thank you.